...the Dover Area School Board, if you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton, here. Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie? Mr. Roehser?
Here.
Eight members are present.
Thank you. We will not have student board representative reports tonight because of the inclement weather. We've encouraged them to stay at home. So with that, we will move straight into our presentations and celebrations tonight. Our first item is our Dover High School Course Selection Guide. Dr. Maloney is going to handle this, I believe.
So each year, we bring you the Course Selection Guide for next year. It's that time of year, believe it or not. And so what Dr. Maloney is going to highlight are some of the, just some of the changes and additions and some different things that is in our course guideline for next year. I will tell you, Mrs. Weakland has worked very hard on this to streamline it and make it clearer for parents and students to understand, so she did a really nice job on it.
I'm not sure how to get rid of that piece of it, but there it goes.
Okay. You can go to the next one. As Mrs. Kroom said, this is Mrs. Weakland's presentation, so I am filling in for her. So if you have questions, you may have some details that I'm unable to answer, I'll make sure you get the answers, and she did do a great job on this. We really just wanted to highlight some of the things that are changed in the Course Selection Guide. The graduation requirements is a highlight, however, there aren't changes there. I can show you that in a second. Classification of academic leveling, course additions/ removal, addition of work-based learning courses, and reintroduction of items. So the graduation requirements, you had a presentation, I think you'll remember, last year from Mr. Wassler, that he had worked with a committee. This does not reflect anything that you heard then, you didn't vote on any of that. So these are our current graduation requirements. The only change really has to do with career readiness, which that, those career standards were implemented a few years ago, and that's something that was added to the Course Selection Guide, I don't believe that was in before. And the other one that I think she added was under the humanities credit, the high school decided to add comparative, if you could go to the next slide, comparative religions to, as a humanities credit. Very minimal changes, but just wanted to make you aware of those. Academic leveling, the change here is that where it says core courses, college prep, honors, college in the high school, and then advanced placement. Core and college prep used to be academic one and academic two. They just changed the language because they wanted it to reflect the fact that even if you're in a core class, that just means algebra could also be a college prep course, but it's required, so it's considered a core class. So they wanted to change the leveling. You could go to the next slide. Some of the additions, and we've talked about these at some of our, if you're on the Curriculum Committee, you've heard us talk about some of these, and then Mr. Delauter did, thank you. I'm changing on my computer so that I can follow along myself. But Mr. Delauter did recap some of this for you from our meetings. College in the high school, government, and politics course, we offered that one year, I believe. So we're reintroducing the college in the high school course into the course guide. English 11 honors course, I think we just talked about that at our last meeting, where there was AP where you had the core course, but now we're going to reintroduce the English 11 honors course. Algebra 1A and 1B will be combined into Algebra 1 for the entire year. So right now, students can come in and they may take A the second semester of their ninth grade year, and then B the first semester of their sophomore year. We'd like to send two different teachers, so they'd like to see that be one full year trying to capture the same teacher for the entire year, and see how that would make sense. Career and finance course, if you look down at the removal courses where it says personal finance and career portfolio, I think they're basically, and if I'm wrong here, Chuck, you can help me out, but I think they're basically the same course, so we're moving, removing the personal finance and career portfolio, and it's becoming career and finance course. And right now, that is, we're encouraging all students to take that, however, it is not required, it's just strongly recommended. With the next adoption of graduation requirements, we're going to make that a requirement for all students, but that all students do get that finance, that financial literacy piece through our junior achievement program. So. School store and management course, I guess right now, students have the opportunity to participate in working in the school store, but we've now created a course for that. Yes? Yes. Okay. And then construction skills course was removed, and reason being, we've only had like two students elect the course, and we just haven't been able to run it, so elected to remove that. Some things that they're putting back into the Course Selection Guide, so these aren't necessarily new, they were in the guide before, and then we went back and looked at a guide from 1415 or 1516, we found that they had been removed, even though we continue to offer them. So Hack Academy programs, they are back in the guide, and they're for seniors, and students do pay 50% of the tuition to attend those. Cyber courses and summer school courses, so credit recovery in the summer, so this basically, summer school is for students who have failed the course and need to retake it in order to stay on track. And then our courses that students take for enrichment, say, if they want to take something over the summer, instead of taking it during the school year, it is at the student's own expense to take that course. And then lab fees, we have a $5 fee that's been added for some of the CTE courses and art courses, and apparently, we had this before, and it was just taken out of the handbook, and it wasn't enforced, and so now, looking at, these are projects that students take home, so $5 feels rather nominal, and it's very easy to work with students, we'll work with any student on any kind of payment plan, if it's a dollar a week, whatever it takes to help that student meet that requirement. And obviously, if we have any students that just can't do that, we'll find a way to assist. And then, just independent study, just, they're putting more information into the guide because, just making sure that our process is clean and consistent. And then the NCAA eligibility, as we went back and looked at a previous Course Selection Guide, we found that that was a whole section that had been removed, so we reintroduced that into the Course Selection Guide. And I believe they're really, all the changes that we have for this year's guide, so I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Maloney? Thank you. Okay, moving on to the results of our middle school bid with Crabtree Roar Balls, Scott Cousin.
Okay, so we did receive bids on December 17th of last year, and I'm going to go through those bid results. So general construction, we did have three bidders for general construction, you'll note here that one of the bidders not on the list was your general contractor on the high school across the street from this project, which is Low Bar Construction. We had feedback from them that they were too busy to commit to this, to this project, but ECI Construction was the low bidder at 3.937 million, 700,000. You can see there's quite a bit of a spread between the other two bidders of East Coast and Urig. We do have a series of add/ deduct alternates that are priced there with each bidder. I'm not going to go in detail over those, but HVAC construction, we did have pretty good coverage here, we did have five bidders, however, once again, you'll note that Matchline Mechanical, who is your HVAC contractor of the high school, as well, was too busy to bid this work, but we did have Myco, who is your plumbing contractor at the high school, did bid both the HVAC and the plumbing, and they were the low, HVAC contractor at 1.194 million. On the plumbing side, once again, Myco did bid this as well, and they were the low bidder. We only had two plumbing bidders, we, I think we had a little bit more, but they had dropped out during the bidding period, so we, not that great a coverage on the plumbing side of things, but Myco was also the low apparent bidder at $507,000. We did not receive any bids from electrical construction, we did reach out to many different contractors, the sentiment on the street was everybody was already committed for the next summer, this is kind of the problems that we're seeing in the construction industry today. We talked about this before we went out to bid, is, these are some of our fears, that as the economy's coming back, everybody is deciding to go forward with the projects they've been putting off for so many years. So we really have a, more work in the industry than is able to be done by the workforce out there. So we did not receive any bids for this, we did make the decision to go ahead and rebid this, the electrical portion, so that's currently out for rebid right now. We are scheduled to receive bids January 16th. We do have two contractors who have picked up drawings through our office, so we hope they stay on the bid list and that we do receive bids on the 16th. And because of that reason, you really can't take any action tonight on the other three contracts because you don't have a complete project. So we'll receive bids January 16th on the electrical, and then at that time, we can make a decision on how to move forward the project at the next board meeting on the 23rd. This is a summary of the bids, so you can see there, right now, we're estimating electrical at 1 million, we don't know what that will come in at, but we did, with the other bids that we did receive, they were over budget to the tune of probably in the base bids, about 20%, and I'll talk about some of the reasons that we're seeing, seeing that, but certainly some of the comments that I've already made contribute to that. We did, if you remember last time we talked, at the last board meeting, we were incorporating some deduct alternates because we kind of saw this coming in the, in the industry as far as increased construction costs, so we had some deduct alternates that we review with the administration, and if we take all those deduct alternates, that they were okay with taking, that's about 100, a reduction of the base bids, about $148,900. So that brings the total bid cost to about 6,489,800, and we were estimating right around 5.7 million for the, for the total, total construction cost. So right now, we have an overage of about $789,000. And some of those are due to what I mentioned before, there's low bidder participation, the construction industry is very, very busy, and as a matter of fact, right now, talking to a lot of the contractors out there, the beginning of the year is even busier than it was when we were out to bid for this project, so, and there's not enough labor to complete the amount of work out there, so we're seeing a lot of labor shortages, so that's increased labor time as far as, you know, especially on a complex phase project like this, where there's a lot of items. And then, once again, only one of the four prime contractors on the high school project bid this job, and we, when we originally were estimating this, we were factoring that we'd have an economy of scale of having contractors across the street that would have less overhead to do a project like this, but they just didn't have the capacity to bid the work. So we're seeing contractors being very selective with the work they bid. You know, if you recall, we are under, significantly under budget on the high school, that was a brand-new school, that was kind of at the, just the onset of the comeback of the economy, and so we really were able to realize the, those bid results and have, be under budget on that, but now we're kind of at, right in the throes of the economy, kind of ripping and roaring, and, and of course, this is a phased project, it's renovation, it's more complex, it's not as attractive, so there's a lot of bidders and get, and have that competitive nature. So some of the next steps, one of the things that we've started to do- -construction, but we do have the ability before award of bids to discuss with the low bidders, some potential additional, some potential cost savings beyond the deduct alternates, so we have begun that process with those contractors, will continue through that process, and the goal will be, at the next board meeting on the 23rd, to bring forward the results of the electrical construction, along with the results of this post-bid assessment, to see what kind of costs we may be able to reduce, reduce the bids that we have received to date. So that's, that's the current plan of attack here, and then we'll be back in front of you on the 23rd, and I'll caution on, you know, that, once again, the electrical construction, with only being two bidders, and the fact that they knew, they know that the, that there was no bidders the first time around, you might be under the same scenario where it's not as, going to be as competitive environment as we would like, and it's going to be up north of the estimated electrical cost as well. So we're working behind the scenes, more information towards the end of the month. Any questions, comments? Thank you.
Okay, next up is Mr. Benton with the First Capital Federal Credit Union Agreement. We've got Dave.
I've asked your indulgence, and I'll go next. I have no electric at home since 8:30 this morning. So I'd like to get going. So I'd like to talk about the two change orders that are on the agenda for this evening.
There are 1101 and 1102 on the agenda, Low Bar Inc., change order three and four.
Yes. So let's talk about change order number three first. This is an add of $2,158.43 during construction, talking back and forth about the student bank, in fact, we realized there wasn't any clear sight windows into the bank area from the corridor, and we thought it was necessary to have a way that we had, we had kids in there alone with an adult, that there be some glass that we could see through, so we added a large window into one corridor, looks right into the side of the bank, and that's what this is for. So it was something Chuck and I and Mrs. Kroom talked about, and thought it was a worthwhile idea to, for the safety and security of the student. The second one is actually a deduct to the contract of not a lot, but a little bit, $936.68. We're deducting, we're deleting wall padding in a room, we had originally talked about this one, I can't remember what they call the room anymore, but sensory room, about having padding on the walls in case the kids got out of control, and after some additional discussion, it was decided that we didn't think we needed to do that in that room, so we deducted the wall padding, and then we deleted, had to delete some music casework in the music room because of some duct work that we had to change, just how it had to go through the building, and we couldn't have the casework where the duct work was, so we did, you know, just deducted, deleted the casework. And then, at the very end, the third part of this, was actually a, an add for something called Zypex waterproofing admixture. In the orchestra pit, we encountered a lot more water than I think anybody thought we were going to encounter, and we were worried about moisture wicking through the concrete, so we added this, this admixture to the concrete to help alleviate and stop that from happening. It's kind of like a, kind of a preventative measure, if you will, for that. So in total, it ends up washing out as a $936.68 deduction. Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Now, Mr. Benton.
So we have a new partnership that's in front of you with First Capital Federal Credit Union, this is going to be for our student-run branch in our new school, if I can make this go right, here we go. At the new high school, it'll be run by our CT capstone students out of the business department, and with one First Capital Federal Credit Union staff member with them, just like we had in the past, when we were with another financial institution. Opening day will be during, it'll be open during the school day for students and staff, this is not just for anybody coming in off the street, this is only for students and staff. Open during special events, whether it be musical, any band performances, athletic events, anything going on special, they would like to have, be able to open up during those events for the community whenever they come in. So they will also be helping with the business education curriculum, integrating with that, come in, often their assistance with interviews into our business program, however they may help out with our current curriculum that we have. And they are also wanting to be a part of our Dover CTE Occupational Advisory Committees, so they are fully want to integrate not only as a student bank, but also into our curriculum, working and being a business partner with all, with everything at the school. Terms of the agreement, it's a three-year contract, starts when schools open until June 23. The agreement may be renewed at the end of the agreement. If termination is needed by either June 30th of 2023, a 90-day notice must be made. Unlike our last financial institution that we were working with, they gave us basically 20 days when they decide to pull out. So this gives both parties plenty of time to make arrangements if anything's needed. The location of the branch will be in the common area, just on the corner of the gymnasium, right across from the seating for all the cafeteria. It is going to be generally located for all population to be, be able to, to attend it easier than where it is now in our current high school. It'll be able to be accessed by people going to the nanatorium, auditorium, or, or the gymnasium, or to the cafeteria, be sent out. So it'll be right in the main common area of the new school. So it has a much better location, be more friendly for the students to be able to access and staff to be able to access. In any special events, it'll be right there, where everybody will be coming in, the main door, they'll have to walk by it. Does anybody have any questions?
A couple of questions, and you're talking to the banker here. From a construction standpoint of the branch itself, you know, will it have steel cabinetry for, you know, vault kind of stuff, all that?
There is actually another, there is a closet, there will be a vault, they'll bring their own vault in and bolt it to the floor, but it won't be in plain view, it'll be behind another locked door in a closet area.
So the credit union is providing the equipment, then?
Yes, they are providing that, yes.
As far as signage, things like that, will there be a First Capital Credit Union sign there as it relates to like our-
Yes, they'll be above the-
Stuff and all that?
Yeah, they're, they're providing all their own signage, they've already started some discussions with me on where they can put it, there'll be something above the main door, there'll also be signage inside the branch, they are willing to pay half of the, of the cost of the window that need be put in, so they're going to offset 50% of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Question I have, with this possibly now being opened up to the public for special events, do we have any security concerns, and how are we planning on dealing with that?
As far as security?
I mean, it's a bank branch, I'm assuming they're going to have cash on hand?
Yeah, it's not like a normal branch where they don't keep the massive amounts of money, it's only small amounts, even during the day. They're, we limit students on how much they can draw out, so they're not going to be able to draw out hundreds or thousands of dollars, they just don't have that volume, so we can work through that.
Are there any cameras within the branch itself? I'm just thinking if you have somebody from the public that comes into your point-
That's more my concern.
They pass a fraudulent check or something like that, do we have them on camera, showing that they were there at a certain time?
The camera has not been talked about, but we can talk about that and have them part of the agreement put into it.
I'd feel better if something like that was included.
Kind of business will a student or staff member be able to conduct with, with a branch like this? What options are out there for them?
Checking savings, checking saving accounts, I don't think there will be any loan office part of that, it'll be just checking, saving, just like we had, had in the past with that.
Okay, did I understand you correctly to say the public will not be-
Not during the day.
Not during the day?
No.
But they will be able to do something?
Yeah, in the evenings when it's the common with people coming in, yes.
Okay, no cash machines or anything like that, or?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Not at this time.
I'm assuming that the staff member then will also be required to have their clearances-
They all do, yes, and they have already started that process-
Okay.
-to work with our students.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Chuck. Okay, board appreciation certificates, Mrs. Kroom.
So in January, we celebrate School Director Recognition Month in Pennsylvania. This special month is a time for us to build awareness and understanding of the vital function as an elected board member of, Board of Education plays in our community. Did you know that nine out of every 10 students in the United States attends public schools? Therefore, access to high-quality public education is crucial, not only for our children's success, but for the strength of our society and community. It takes a team of dedicated people, teachers, administrators, staff, parents, and other community members to provide that education. The nine members of our local school board are a key part of this team, making informed decisions that shape our public schools. School directors devote hours per month to the complex responsibilities of board business, including adopting policy, voting on budgets, evaluating school security issues, and reviewing high-level decisions. Board service is an unpaid position. As locally-elected officials, school directors are invested in their communities, our neighbors, our friends, local leaders, parents, and engaged citizens. During this month, designated for recognizing these public servants, I ask that everyone takes a moment to express your gratitude to school directors' time and efforts year-round on behalf of our community- on behalf of our communities. The job they do ensures our schools continue to provide opportunities for students for success, every student, every day. On behalf of the students, the staff, the parents, and community members of Dover Area School District, I thank you personally for your service, your dedication, and your caring to the children of the Dover Area School District. And I have a beautiful certificate for each of you. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Krim. So earlier this evening, we celebrated with a lovely dinner on this snowy evening. And again, just, this is, it's a very, very important role that our school directors serve, and we thank you very much.
And finally, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 15th, Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, next is our first public comment period. 2019 School Board Reorganization Meeting.
Move.
This is a three-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. Any questions or discussion? Do any of the four of you have any comments you'd like to make tonight? Hearing none, Mrs. Banko. Okay, Board President's Communication. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss some personnel matters that are on tonight's agenda, as well as some future items coming up related to that. So with that, we will move into some of our voting items. The first is the approval of our minutes. So right now, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 19th, 2019 Board Meeting.
Move.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Banko. Okay, now we'll move on to our consent agenda for the evening. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November 21st, 2019 Board So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the Planning Meeting.
Move.
consent agenda. We have a motion and a second, questions or discussion?
Move.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Banko. Mrs. Krim, did you want to provide any highlights from any of these items for us tonight?
We're looking at, just to share with you, I think the food service consulting agreement. We are taking this opportunity as we look for a new food service director to really take a look at our food service program and to make some recommendations to us and, you know, as, and possibly help train the new person. So we're kind of excited about that. There are a number of contracts on here, as there are every month. Some of them are student contracts for some of our special needs students. And I think I want to highlight the Hurley Auctions Agreement. We're very excited. We are going to begin auctioning off pieces of the intermediate school and maybe some other things. This is an online auction where they will come in, take pictures, and people can purchase things and then come in and pick it up. So we're very excited about that and to start taking some of the things out of the intermediate school. Was there any questions on any of the other things on the consent agenda?
I did want to make note under the donations, we're very grateful. It's, I believe, tonight $1,100 worth of donations to the district. 150 of that is from folks to help with negative lunch balances within the district, $100 from the Engineering Society of York for some transportation needs, and $350 from New Hope Ministries for same, for services for families in need in the district. So I think that's very generous of these individuals, and we thank them for that.
Related to that, I know there was another district in our area that tried to combat some of the deficiencies through a fundraising effort. I think it was a GoFundMe page or something like that. I was curious, Mr. Pratt, if that is, is there any restrictions on that or, or regulations regarding that that, you know, keep you, or, you know? I didn't know you could even do that, so I was curious about that.
We've, we've established policy of the district in regard to have, setting up GoFundMe pages, so we just have to follow those policies as we've established, but that you can, as the school district, you could raise funds in many different ways, and that would just be one to go through, but we have established a policy when it comes to the GoFundMe pages.
Each of the elementary and I think the intermediate school, they've done numerous fundraisers throughout the last couple of years to raise funds. They do dress-down days and different things to raise funds for lunch accounts. So, yeah, they've been very helpful.
Anybody else? And the motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to some other reports. We have our Policy Committee Report, Mrs. Krim.
On December 10th, we had our last Policy Committee, and I'd like to highlight two of the policies we're working on. We're not ready yet to bring them, but we are working. Called extracurricular, co-curricular. PSBA is recommending removing the word co-curricular, and co-curricular are things like band, that it's a class and it's after-school. I think Renaissance is one, and some of our CTE extracurriculars are co-curriculars. We are still talking about it, but we, as a district, think we're going to maintain the co-curricular word because, especially with CTE, it's a number of our clubs and our band. So we're still working on that, we will bring that to you in the future. Other than that, really, nothing changes, it's just that the co-curricular, for whatever reason, PSBA has removed. And the other policy, just I'd like to share, is that we are looking at student attendance. One of the areas when we had our Future Ready Index that was published is area of weakness, it's not an area of weakness, but it's not as good as it should be, is our attendance rate. We should be highly proficient in our attendance rates, especially in the elementary school, and we're not. And we believe that part of the reason is we have surf passes, which are, are when parents can take their students out for an educational reason, and we allow up to 10 days, two weeks, for parents to do that. We are discussing reducing that to five days. We think that's appropriate, and, you know, we really do believe that the students need to be in school. We are also looking at that form, we need to do some revisions to the form. You know, we require it to be educational, and, but then truly, we don't really ask what the educational activities are. So we want to redo the form so parents can be clear with the educational activities, but that, again, we're still talking about that. We want to, you know, we want to publish that a little more, but we are seriously looking at, we think, we feel we need to do that with our achievement and our attendance rate, we need to improve that in, in both of those areas. So that was pretty much it, except for the policies you just passed, which were cleaned up and all PSBA policy recommended for special education.
Any questions for Mrs. Krim? Okay, moving on to facilities. We do have an item to vote on tonight, and that is for the Agreement of Sale. Motion to accept an offer and enter into an agreement for sale of real estate with Thomas and Kimberly Kretzmer to purchase property in its Crawltown Elementary located at 21 Creek Road, East Berlin, PA 17316, deed book 092A, page 0400, for the price of $180,000. So move. We have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? Mr. Pratt, could you just give us a brief highlight as to the next steps in this process?
The next step in this process is once you approve of the sale, then we will file petition with the Court of Common Pleas of York County for them to approve this sale, which is a private sale. As we've discussed in the past, that there is certain steps we have to take. Once we file that petition and the court takes action, there will be notification to the public of the sale, and at that time, the court will open up for any comments in regard to the sale. And once that has been completed, then the court will approve the sale, and we can move forward with the finalization of...
Questions for Mr. Pratt or anybody else? Okay, Mrs. Banko. Okay, next up, Unity Council. Mrs. Mailey is not with us tonight. Mrs. Krim, did you have anything?
Just a very quick summary, we are continuing redefining our district unity council, and we, we were right after the holidays, so we didn't have a lot of people. But we continue at each of our building levels with our unity activities and are excited to actually bring some of them to the board in the next couple of months.
Questions for Mrs. Krim? Okay, next we'll move on to the Capital Project Steering Committee. These are the change orders that Mr. Nelson addressed earlier. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Change Order Number Three for Lobar Inc. for the amount of $2,158.43. We have a motion and a second, questions or discussion? I did have a question on this. We're looking at $2,158.43. I mentioned that the credit union was going to cover half of the cost. Is this half of the overall cost, or will the cost actually be about $1,000 in the district in the end? Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Banko. And the motion carries. Okay, next up, Unity Council. Mrs. Mailey is not with us tonight. Mrs. Krim, did you have anything?
Just a very quick summary, we are continuing redefining our district unity council, and we, we were right after the holidays, so we didn't have a lot of people. But we continue at each of our building levels with our unity activities and are excited to actually bring some of them to the board in the next couple of months.
Questions for Mrs. Krim? Okay, next we'll move on to the Capital Project Steering Committee. These are the change orders that Mr. Nelson addressed earlier. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Change Order Number Three for Lobar Inc. for the amount of $2,158.43. We have a motion and a second, questions or discussion? I did have a question on this. We're looking at $2,158.43. I mentioned that the credit union was going to cover half of the cost. Is this half of the overall cost, or will the cost actually be about $1,000 in the district in the end? Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions or discussion? And the motion carries. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Lobar Inc. Change Order Number Four for the amount of a deduction of $936.68. We have a motion and a second, questions or discussion? And the motion carries. Okay, next up is Dover Eagle Foundation. I did not have anything to report at this time. The foundation will regroup in February, will be there next meeting, and they'll continue focusing on their fundraising efforts, reviewing some more of the grant applications. Okay, York Adams Academy, Mr. Emmig.
Our winter graduation was held on December the 10th, and due to a prior commitment, I could not attend that, but I heard everything went very well. As of January the 2nd, we have 18 seats at York Adams, only seven right now are occupied. We still have 11 open seats.
Mr. Emmig, thank you. Any questions?
On those seats that are open, is there any cost to the district for having those seats open?
But they fill, the kids graduate, they leave. So they fill them, they leave, they fill them, they leave. Does that make sense? So we at one time, I think, had 15, and then the kids graduate, and then it opens up again for another student, but yes.
Okay.
You pay for it for the year.
That seems like a lot of open seats. I was just wondering, is it realistic that they would fill for the spring? They will?
They could.
Okay, York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter.
We didn't have a meeting in December, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. I see we do have a budget, district cost sheet resolution on here. There, is there any action we need to take? This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the York County School of Technology budget as per the enclosure.
Move.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? The motion carries. Okay, LRU, Mrs. Krim.
Nothing tonight.
Legislative and York Learning, Mr. Ralhauser.
Nothing on legislation. We met on the first Tuesday in December, we reorganized, and we will be meeting every three months now instead of every two months, so the next meeting will be in March.
Thank you, Mr. Ralhauser. Any questions for him? Okay, Mrs. Brenton, PSBA.
Also, nothing new to report, still just kind of keeping watch, the legislature returns from their winter break next Monday, the House, and I believe the Senate as well, just kind of keeping tabs on where charters and charter school reform and the, oh my gosh, EITC stuff goes.
Questions for Mrs. Brenton. Okay, Mrs. Herman.
All comes out the way it's supposed to be said. Okay, one of the goals of the Township Comprehensive Plan is to create a thriving workforce development program, and that will hopefully be accomplished by the Dover Area Business Association and the ICDC Committee, which is what I'm on, working together along with York County's Economic Alliance's Pathway to Prosperity to enhance Dover's CTE program and initiatives. This will be done by fostering an environment that supports academic pursuits by supporting the recommendations set forth in the Education Chapter in the Comprehensive Plan. These ideas include fostering creative exchanges between the Dover Area School District and the business sector, enhancing adult skill development opportunities both in and outside the region, and provide transportation when necessary via Rabbit Transit or Dover Area School District. Coordinating with the Dover Area School District to offer a career fair-style event. The goal would be to introduce students to meetings with potential employers, communicating qualifications, building a resume, et cetera. Emphasis could be placed on non-college-bound students, highlighting the available trade jobs in the borough slash township may help to ensure future residency, and exploring, training, collaborating with employers, and new innovative programs that increase job opportunities to Dover residents. So things are moving along very nicely. I'm really pleased with the fact that we're working together after years and years and years of hearing that it wasn't happening.
And we have our first meeting tomorrow. Mr. Benton and I are meeting with township and borough representatives to go through that.
Oh, wow, great.
And be real concrete with what does that all mean. Yep, tomorrow, so excited.
Any questions for Mrs. Herman? Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, Superintendent's Report, Mrs. Krim.
Okay, I have two things for you. The first thing I'd like to do, share with you is a short presentation. Jen?
I'm looking.
You look forward. There were some questions back a couple of months ago about debts, lunch debt we talked about, and we talked about you had approved us to appoint a... Wanted to share some information with you about how we get there, and I'd also like to share a little more information with you about the free and reduced lunch and about some of the lunch debt and how we get there as well. Okay. So first, I think a lot of times there's misunderstanding that the lunch debt by students is solely our free and reduced lunch students. And what I wanted to share with you first is how, how do people apply for free and reduced lunch? lunch, their application, and the opportunities that they are given to apply and make sure that we do have the right students getting the free and reduced lunch application. And as you are aware, we are about 50% low income in our district. So on July 1, a Sky alert goes out to all parents who have had free and reduced lunch in the past. And they are told that the application is available online. We then send reminders out to them all summer long to complete their free and reduced lunch form. August 30th, if we haven't heard from them, and we're still, we're in school at this point, if we haven't heard from them, the food... ...year that have not completed applications to school counselors, principals, and the social workers. We contact each one of them because they have until the first 30 days of school to fill out their form. Now, yes, it is online, but what we do is we have kiosks out front here that they can come in and get help from anybody here to fill them out. They can come into school to fill them out. But it's really important that within the first 30 days of school, they fill it out because on the 31st day of school, that expires. And unfortunately, if they haven't filled out their free and reduced form on the 31st, then it goes into debt. And you can't take it out of debt once it's done that. So our free and reduced lunch applications, it's a really long application time, and we do offer tons of support. We also on our parents' nights, just to make you aware, we have people at each of the buildings sitting there with computers, helping parents who have not yet filled out. And our guidance counselors are extremely involved in this process because they know the families and they know who hasn't applied. So we work really, really hard to make sure our free and reduced lunch application students are all taken care of, and we do a really, a pretty good job of that. Okay. Understand. So on the next slide, I want to share with you how our negative balance accounts work. So during the school year, we have a negative balance report about lunch, and it has specific family names on it. It is available to counselors and principals only, and it's sent out by the, and social workers, and it's sent out by the food service department. The counselors and the principals are to look at that list, and if there are specific family situations they know about, that maybe the family has, you know, parents lost a job, or there's some sort of situation, they share that information with the food service department. This report is automatically sent every single week at 6:00 on Wednesday. When students have $8 or less in their account, they get a phone call from the system or and an email from the system to let parents know that they only have $8 left in their account. They then get a second phone call when the account goes into the negative. So what we're doing with lunch, we're keeping an eye on the kids. We know we need to. We're keeping an eye on our low income. We're keeping an eye on as kids go into debt. And counselors, their role at this time is of helping nature. How can we help? Is there something going on? Okay, so then, parents, after it goes into the negative, parents and guardians do receive a call weekly from Skyward about the lunch accounts and/or the negative balance. All right? So they do get that, get those calls weekly. At any time, you can go on, Jen, never is their lunch stopped, ever. They get a lunch whether they're in debt or not, always. All right? And they get a full lunch. When the debt goes into $50, our accounting clerk makes a call to the parents to notify them of the debt and to offer assistance with a payment plan, you know, again, to find out if there are extenuating circumstances we need to be aware of. We document all of these contacts into Skyward, so when counselors are contacting parents or the accounting office is contacting parents, people can see that parents have been contacted and how many times, you know, they're contacted. Once a debt of $100 occurs, school counselors reach out again to see if they can help. And again, we document this. So this whole process, what I want to make you aware is, is what I kind of want to show you is before any seriousness of sending a family to a debt collection agency, we have contacted the parent on multiple occasions. Every quarterly, every quarter, we have an unpaid lunch account meeting in October, January, April, and that includes the first food service director, myself, Jen Lupo, and Jen, both of the social workers, and all of the school counselors. We go through the list of every single family that is struggling to pay their bills. And at that meeting, we determine who at that point we will send to the, send to a collection agency. If a counselor at that meeting says, no, 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 please understand this happened, this happened, we don't do it. Typically, when we have tried and we have gotten every indication that the parent is just not willing to pay. A lot of these phone calls, we have, don't feed my child, well, we're going to feed their child. We're going to feed their child. So at this meeting, it's a very important meeting. Refer them to our collection agency. It has been after a lengthy process. So again, after every quarterly meeting, the business office then refers to the district's collection agency. We only did that for the first time...
A month ago.
A month ago.
End of December.
A month ago, the end of December. So that's the kind of how our whole lunch process works, but we have other, there's also other possible debt that could be sent to a collection agency. For example, student iPad or accessories are broken or not returned. So the student leaves the district, takes their iPads with them. That happens. Curriculum materials not returned. Athletic uniforms or equipment not returned. Insufficient checks for maybe fundraisers that have not cleared. Or any other possible debt that could occur from clubs or activities. So that's other possible debt that we will use. But again, I want to just assure you, because I know there was some concern about this, when we use the collection agency, it's... Lots of conversation and trying to work with families to have that debt collected. Any questions?
One question. You stated that once they hit a negative balance, the district reports weekly saying that they have a negative balance. That's the robotic call.
To them, yeah. They, yes, weekly.
Over Christmas vacation, all the way to the beginning of the new year, a parent got contacted every single day.
Well, that...
They sent me the record, they played them formally.
If you give us the name, we can check out exactly why.
Yeah.
Because that's not, I mean, that's not us doing it. It is the system, so I don't know what happened. Yeah, send me the name so we can, we can check on that. Absolutely. Absolutely. Any other questions?
How many student accounts are actually in debt at this point?
Oh, boy.
Hundreds.
Hundreds.
And keep in mind, some of those may range from $2.40 to...
$400.
Yeah. We have one that's $400 right now, and I think there's some families that could be $1,500.
Yeah. It is extremely important. This is taxpayer money. This is taxpayer money, and we are extremely careful when we send out to debt collector. But this is taxpayer money, and it's thousands and thousands of dollars. I think our, what was our last, was like $32,000. You know, that's a half a teacher. So we take this very serious, and we have to rein this in. We have to do our best to get the money on behalf of the taxpayer.
When you talk to the families that after you do your research, you feel as though they do have the means to pay these bills, what is their rationale for not paying these bills? I mean, they say just don't feed their kid, but what's the rationale here? I mean, what are you hearing?
They just won't pay. There's never a...
No.
I mean, some of them definitely have justifiable reasons, but the ones that are, they won't pay, there's no reason, they just don't pay.
So the ones that are in arrears but have legitimate reasons why, do we end up just then writing off that balance? Or does, or does that where these donations come from?
Could be, could be.
Right. So we have not yet written it off, but at some point, when it becomes uncollectible, which a lot of ours is right now, we are going to have to use general fund money to pay this off if it doesn't get paid. If they don't pay it, then we, or if it's justifiable, we use some of those donation money. So a lot of the times, what the schools will do whenever they do their dress down days or a parent calls and says, hey, I want to donate this money, they'll say, okay, is there a specific grade you want, you want to do it to? Is there a specific student or building? We try to let whomever is making the donation decide because we don't feel it's our decision on who deserves it the most. The person that's making the donation should decide. I would like it to go to third grade at Dover Elementary or wherever.
And then, for these folks, if they are having issues, I guess, are the ones having issues, are they on our free and reduced lunch program already? Or are they ones that don't qualify but are still having financial issues?
Both.
Both, okay. And then, I'm sorry. You said that we always do the free and reduced lunch from the previous year. How do we know of new folks who may qualify for that? Do we get records of that? Or how does it work?
No, we, we sent out a blast email to, y'all get it, like on July 1, saying it's time to redo, renew your free and reduced lunch, or fill one out if your situation has changed. We have no idea unless they fill it out.
And some of those things that Mrs. Krim was talking about earlier, just having our staff at open houses, having a table there to say, you know, here's free and reduced application, or if we're seeing parents have problems, you know, whether they're working with other administrators in the district for other things, that's when we offer them the application, if we know.
So you have to be made aware...
Yes.
...of a situation before you can start that process?
And you know, it amazes me that what we go through, because it used to be a Form 1 home, the first day of school, Form 1 home, and that was the end of it. Now you're starting in July, and you're trying over and over and over again. It's just, it's amazing. It's amazing what you're doing.
Couple, couple other questions and comments. Am I correct that you cannot use the balance of food services to pay off existing debt?
Right.
You'd have to use general fund to pay that off.
Right.
That's one thing that I think the public needs to understand. The other thing, you know, the comments that were made that raised this question to begin with a few months ago is the perception that, you know, we as a district are heartless going after parents who can't afford to pay for lunch. And that's sort of the overview, which is not, not at all true. I mean, it sounds like even with this process, even using a collection agency down the road at Last Resort, when all those other steps haven't been taken, there's an incredible amount of time invested in trying to collect these debts from district personnel that are trying to do that. And unfortunately, if it does get to that point where you're just not successful in doing it, and you make the determination that it's not a situation that is, you know, needs to be forgiven or helped out, there's still a lot of time invested in that, and that also is taxpayer money that's going towards that. So if anything, I think the public needs to understand that the actual opposite is very true. By the time it gets to a collection agency, it's actually saving them something down the road rather than being heartless. And it looks like, you know, the steps that we can to not get to that point.
Right.
So if I could summarize it in a kind of a nutshell, that's really pans out, the exact opposite of what is perceived.
Yep. Any other questions?
Yeah, on the collection, they go onto their bill, what they charge?
Yes, it is.
The collection agency sends us the funds that we are due from the parents, and they keep the, their fee that is tacked on to it.
That can get expensive, too.
Absolutely.
On the parameters, it's no different from free and reduced lunch students. The parameters are still $50, $100. I'm assuming it would just take longer to get to that, to that benchmark before any, any next step would happen. Is that correct?
Yep. All right, the other thing I'd like to discuss with you, this was mentioned also about two months ago, you're seeing in the news all of this vaping and all of that. So I wanted to bring you some information tonight to share with you some of the things we're doing. And just to kind of, we're just, this is new for us, and we're just at the beginning of this. But I will share with you that the law is changing on vaping. As you are aware, the age for purchasing nicotine is up, is going up to 21 years old. So that's going to be an interesting dynamic for us. And for us, what's really important is prior to this new law, if a student vaped on campus, you had to prove it was nicotine, that it was like a tobacco product. Well, the new law changes that. Just vaping on school property can be cited by the police. All right? So that's extremely important. Vaping is now being identified as its own behavior, not vaping cigarettes or vaping marijuana. It's identifying that. It's almost like simulated smoking, so that's how it's being viewed, and they can be cited. So we think that's going to be a big change for us. We're not sure when that changes in the law, but it will definitely be reflected in next year's student handbook, and we're right now working with it. What we're also doing right now is we are sending a group of people off to be trained in vaping nicotine cessation curriculum. And we are sending nine people, we are sending both social workers, a number of phys ed teachers and counselors to be trained by the Karen Foundation. What our discipline is showing is that 85% of our substance abuse discipline is vaping. 85% of what we're substance abuse, you know, marijuana or smoking, 85% of it is vaping. So this is definitely something that we need to work with. Kids are referred to the SAT program, just like for nicotine, when they're caught. But what we're going to do with this nicotine cessation curriculum is we are right now talking about next year putting in place that that is part of your discipline if you are caught vaping or smoking in school, is that you will have to go through a nicotine cessation program. So we're still working on that. We're still gathering information. We're not there yet, but we are taking this very seriously. And for next year, this will definitely be put in place at the high school and possibly a little bit at the intermediate school. The intermediate school, we do not see this level of vaping. We see some of it, but not nearly this level as we're seeing in the high school. So I just kind of wanted to bring you up to speed because you're seeing all that on the news, and where are we? And again, this is new for us and how this is, but changing the law is going to be extremely helpful. It's something like, I don't know, maybe like a $75 fine and then put on court costs. Do you have anything to bring up to you with that? Any questions about that?
I do have a question, two questions, actually, well, commented a question. Just heard a report this week of a young man that is in the hospital based off of that. I think that's what drew my concern last month when I asked that question to begin with, and that is, you know, this thought that it's a safe alternative is turning out to not be the case. And I feel, I feel like, you know, our students need to be made aware that this is not a safe alternative. There's ramifications. The question I have is, does that change how our signage is around the district? Like the, you know, will we have to go back and...
It could.
...update all the signage?
Yeah, it could, it could. Yep.
Because adults...
Absolutely, absolutely. And as I said, some of our phys ed teachers are being trained. They're elementary phys ed teachers. So we're excited to kind of get that information so we can embed it in some of our health curriculum as well and do more with that.
Getting back to vaping, one of the boys that works down at the store graduated last year, and he said the bathrooms were always cloudy last year.
With vaping, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mrs. Krim? Okay, any other comments or observations from our board members tonight? Okay, public comment, anybody? Okay, our future meeting announcements. Our next meeting will be Thursday, January 23 at 6:00 PM. We will have board committees, and at 7:00 PM, we will have our regular board meeting. And then on February 18, 2020, we will have our regular board meeting at 7:00 PM. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, yes? Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.